We call the meeting into order. Will everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mrs. Dye?
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment for items on the agenda. Seeing none, I close as part of the meeting. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board?
Half a board.
Well, we have enough of a board.
Three-fifths of them.
Exactly, three-fifths, and that's plenty. All right, do we have any committee reports?
Well, I was supposed to have one, but I forgot my notes. I'm not prepared.
All right.
No, I attended the APT meeting at the high school, and I sort of forget.
All right.
I forgot my notes, sorry. But it was just mostly end-of-year stuff, closing out books, they had elections on some of the, not elections, but they appointed different chair people for committees, getting ready for next year, project graduation, they talked about project graduation and final numbers, and so there's a lot of that kind of stuff, so.
It's fantastic.
If there was anything important, I'll report at the next meeting.
All righty.
Sorry.
It was a wonderful meeting, though, so.
It was a really good meeting.
All right.
Sorry.
Sorry. I attended the South End FSA meeting. What was really nice is they gave out the Carolyn, and I never pronounce her name right, Ballyaka, all right, scholarships, which was really nice. She was a third-grade teacher who had passed away a number of years ago, and the recipients this year were Anthony Roddy and Julia Jacoby, and both, Anthony couldn't make it, but his, sorry, his speech was read, which was nice, and Julia was there, and she spoke about how her love of teaching and how she's going to become a teacher and how she was inspired by Mrs. Ballyaka, so that was just really nice. Ms. Reed was announced, or recognized as Teacher of the Year, which was pretty exciting. She's a fourth-grade teacher. They also approved some purchases for money that they had raised throughout the year, a bunch of things that are kind of exciting and Mrs. DiMatteo is very excited about. They also announced their new officers, which is exciting as well, and that was it for South End. And then I also attended the middle school FSA meeting, it's a busy month, and Mr. Chell was there, and he talked briefly about how Career Day was a big success and then pretty much wrapping up the year. The one big thing that was kind of cool, actually, was the discussion on the courtyard naming that they were going to have and then they since had. The students had put together and really worked on a kind of a bear space that could kind of been left there in between all the buildings for years, and they had a whole naming contest, and it was named Panther Square, which I've been reminded, it's not exactly a square, but it's not about the dimension, it's about the idea of a square. So anyway, it's really nice, and actually, after the middle school graduation, the reception was held out there, which was really nice. So it was nice, and this, as Mr. Mandela said, it was a lot of just kind of wrapping up the year-end things, so that was very nice. There's only so many FSA meetings, so. All right. All right, tonight, we have a board presentation. I'm surprised they're not home packing for China, but they're here to give their presentation on an upcoming trip that's in two years from now.
Wow.
Which will be here tomorrow, right?
It seems kind of crazy, since we're, you know, leaving and in preparation for our next one, too, if I'm even doing this, but.
Okay, so as you can see, proposing 2018 summer, Discovering South Africa. The Globe Trotters, as we are coined now, have partnered up with EF, Educational Tours, so that students can go to and explore international destinations and gain awareness, global perspectives and connections aligned with their school curriculum, to bring subjects, people, and places and events to life. EF also provides global settings to sharpen their key 21st century skills, critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, collaboration, and global competence, and developing their interpersonal and leadership skills is definitely one of the best factors of international travel. So, this would be part of the PowerPoint we would present to the parents if this was approved by the board, and we go over all the things that I just mentioned, why travel's important, where we're going next, EF and talking about all their schools all over the world, the safety approach, their peace of mind policy, what's included in the pricing and what's not, what they would have to raise money for or plan ahead for, and how to reserve their spot. And just, you've heard this before from Chris, Amy, and I, and why we're so passionate about travel, why this tour specifically is great for our group at Cedar Grove, I'm going to get to when I talk about the itinerary a little bit, and helping students become global citizens. So here's the itinerary, well, I mean, not the full one, but highlights. The first day would be a tour of Soeeto in South Africa, and it's full of history, and we would be seeing the home, the former home of Winnie Mandela, and I have it more in-depth We would see the largest Roman Catholic church in the township. Regina Mundi played an important role in the struggle against apartheid, and yes, visit the homes of Winnie Mandela and Desmond Tutu, as well as the former residence of Nelson Tour highlight number two, a full-day game drive in Kruger National Park. Tour highlight number three, visit to a village and musical experiences. I added that, and I'll talk about some of those connections in a moment. Tour highlight number four, visiting the homes of Winnie Mandela, I mentioned that. Number five, visiting the beautiful landscapes of South Africa such as Blyde River Canyon, which is one of the top largest canyons in the world, top three. God's Window, which we would see there, Bork's Luck Potholes, Cable Car Ride to Table Mountain, Cape Town Harbor, which is beautiful, very resort-like area along the water, Devil's Peak, Lion's Head, and Castle of Good Hope, which is now where the South African military resides, but there's also a museum area. And the last day, tour highlight number six, visiting an African penguin colony, which they have some of those at Turtleback Zoo, and the kids would get to be up close to them, and a lot more. It's a lengthy visit. Those are some of the things I mentioned, and this is a slide that would be at the parent meeting. EF has over 50 years of experience, and that's why the Globe Trotters have chosen to work with them, and we've had, we had a great experience with London-Barcelona, Paris trip, and now China, we're on our road Thursday to travel to Beijing, and the educational value is priceless. They can also earn credit, high school and college credit, there's a program called We Share as well, that they can be involved with throughout the process of our monthly The safety 24-hour emergency on-call service cards that we have, the peace of mind policy is basically if there's any sense of danger or a problem in the area that we're traveling, arrangements are made immediately to go elsewhere. The departure date window that we're proposing is June 28, 2018 through July 6, 2018, very flexible, they like to have two- or three-day window for the flight plan, but it would be the summer of 2018. They have a global travel protection plan, and it covers the tour cancellation and interruption, illness and accident, baggage and property, flight delays, and 24-hour access to an English-speaking rep. And there's the We Share. Mr. Canella and Ms. Soracco and I have been trying to incorporate many of these activities in our monthly meetings. What the students would be responsible for and their folks, the extra spending money or additional tour services, but just as with the China trip, it's pretty booked itinerary, and the only open day is the last day before we travel home, and would be in Cape Town for a little free time and spending money, souvenirs. We collect for the tipping for our tour director, bus driver, and local guides, the passport/visa fees, and airport baggage fees if they're overweight, and the special documents that we go through, we help them through that process. What is included, the round-trip flights, hotels with private bathrooms, breakfast and dinner every day, the comfortable motor coach, the travel protection plan, our full-time bilingual tour director, the itinerary that's educational, sightseeing by licensed local guides, the entrance fees to all the attractions like Kruger National Park and the museums, and the We Share EF's online platform for deeper learning experience. So paying for the tour, the program price is $4,780, and I talked about what that includes. If we have a private group, 25 to 29, that's an additional $135. The protection plan, $155, and so the total for students under 20 years old, $5,070. 25 monthly payments of $199, or $7 a day, and then there is a price for adults as well. And we tell them at the meeting, too, you can pay in full at enrollment, or you can go on a manual plan or an automatic plan online, and the customer service number is there. We show them that there are some different ways to donate through social media, so they can raise money, especially around the holidays or their birthday, and there's our tour number, and I have TBA because this is pending approval. So I just wanted to mention, with the South Africa trip, curriculum-wise for myself, and with history and with language, I'd like to incorporate music as a big part of the South African trip, and I have a connection through the Keystone State Boys Choir. They go every summer for two weeks to South Africa, and I met the director, and he's willing to talk to me about some of his connections and villages that they go to to experience and immerse themselves in sharing music and what happens in daily life in a village, where they sing morning, noon, and night, literally. It's just a part of their daily lives, and I'd like the students to experience that on the trip, especially when we visit the towns. It wouldn't be every day, and so I don't want this trip to scare off students who are not necessarily interested in music or performance. It wouldn't be a performance-oriented trip, just a trip to experience music of another culture, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity because I'm kind of obsessed also with South African music, and the students take to it very quickly and love the percussive elements of it as well. Any questions? I don't want to take up more of your time.
Just when will this be presented to the students, when you get back in September?
I would like to, if the board approves, first approval, I'd actually like to try to get a letter out this summer, and yeah, so that, like, they could start those monthly payments. They're hefty, yeah.
One of the big goals is, the sooner we get the information out, the sooner the monthly payments are lower for students.
Right.
That's why this is being done two years in advance.
Right. Great.
And how long is the trip? I know you gave the departure window, but what's the entire length of the trip?
10 days.
June 28.
Yeah, it's a 10-day trip.
No, that's the departure window. They leave anywhere between that time. Were you not paying attention?
I mean, actually, I would say 11 days because of travel, you know, the travel, 11, yeah. But 10 days in South Africa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that their winter?
Do we want to take a second for whoever might be packing for China to allow them to leave, or it's totally fine?
Thank you.
Absolutely. I know I'm busy, you must be very busy.
Also, I'm a, like, professional, so can I leave this with you?
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
All right, we continue on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for items B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of May 24, 2016. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of June 2016. B3 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of May 2016. And B4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion?
No, motion, please.
That's what I said, and you guys said there's no motion.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, okay.
Now you wanted a motion again.
Roll call, please. I'll get the hang of this.
No, now it's any discussion.
Any discussion.
No.
That's what I said, can I have a motion?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Bills, may I have a motion for B5, motion to pay the following listed bills in our package for June 21, in the amount listed therein, have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Under Business, I have a motion for B6 through, let's break this up just a little bit, because there's a lot. Let's just go to B19 for now, let's break it up a little bit. B6.
She goes right into reading it, that's why.
I'm not going to read everything, there's a lot. Pursuant to PL 2015, Chapter 47, the Cedar Grove Board of Education intends to renew award or permit to expire the following contracts, they're listed below, awarded by the Board of Education, and there's a whole bunch of them listed below. B7, whereas the Board of Education wishes to establish and/or deposit into a certain reserve accounts at the end, this one is for, the Cedar Grove Board of Education is determined that an amount not to exceed $250,000 is available for such purposes of transfer, now therefore be it resolved by the Cedar Grove Board of Ed, and that is hereby authorizing the district's school business administrator to make this transfer consistent with all applicable laws and regulations, and this is a deposit into the capital reserve account. Okay, B8, whereas the aforementioned statutes authorize procedures under the authority of the Commission of Education which permit a Board of Education to transfer unanticipated excess current revenue or unexpected appropriations into reserve accounts during the month of June, Cedar Grove Board of Education wishes to transfer unanticipated excess current year revenue or unexpended appropriations from the general fund into a maintenance reserve account at year-end for $100,000. B9 is a motion to approve the following scholarship recipients as listed below. B10 is a motion to approve two target take charge of education donations in the amount listed below awarded to Cedar Grove High School. B11 is a motion to approve the purchase of one John Deere XUV tractor in the amount listed below. B12 is a motion to approve the Pomtonian Food Service Agreement for the 2016-2017 school year. B13 is a motion to approve the SOR testing laboratories, Cedar Grove to provide an onsite construction observation and testing services for the Cedar Grove High School Field and Turf Project. B14 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Inc.'s change order number one in the amount of $505,602 for removal and replacement of 43-unit ventilators, 20 being at North End School and 23 being at South End School, and again, funding for this change order will be from the 2014 bond referendum proceeds. B15 is a motion to amend motion B20 from the May 24, 2016 meeting to approve the following staff as instructors listed below, and basically there was just a change to that. B16 is a motion to approve the Stress S.M.A.'s 2016-2017 annual service contract to be amended to include public access online bylaws and policies, and basically what this means is there's going to be a link on our website. B17 is a motion to rescind Beth Legrot and approve Lauren Mastria for the literary magazine stipend at South End School for the 2015-2016 school year, is that right, those dates?
Correct.
Okay. B18 is a motion to approve the following health and dental and pharmaceutical rates for the 2016-2017 school year as listed below. And B19 is a motion to amend items B7 from our May 10, 2016 meeting to reflect the revised annual fee for Performance Matters Student Assessment Services Agreement for the 2016-2017 school year. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd actually like to ask the board if we can pull the contract for Greg Parker, ABA Services, because the increase is exceeding 4%, and I just wanted a chance to talk about that rate increase, and we didn't get a chance to.
Okay, so we'll remove that one from.
Right, so that contract won't be approved.
Which one was that, Mrs. Burke?
Greg Parker.
Greg Parker, ABA Services.
Page, I don't know, it's in B6?
One, two pages now.
I know, I know, I was trying to put a lot in one, it's a little notch. Here, right here. Uh, where is he?
It was on there somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we know, sir.
Is he am? Okay.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, I have a motion for items B20 to, let's make it easy, B28, so we stay on two pages, how about?
So moved.
Second.
Wait, I didn't read them yet.
You're reading them before you let us do the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, B20, is a motion to approve the following tax requisition schedule for the 2016-2017 school year. B21 is a motion to approve the following tax shelter annuities companies open to enrollment to any board employee for the 2016-2017 school year, and they're listed below. B22 is a motion to adopt the uniform minimum chart of accounts distributed by the state and utilized by the district. B23 is a motion to authorize the Business Administrator/Board Secretary to release warrants for payment of the district's bills as needed in between scheduled board meetings, and have those claims ratified at the next regular board meeting. B24 is a motion to approve that the Cedar Grove Board of Education, in compliance with the Administrative Code, acknowledges the following language on student records in Policy 8330 as listed therein. B25 is a motion to approve the curriculum and textbooks for the 2016-2017 school year that are currently in use. B26 is a motion to accept the generous donation of $956.25 from Investors Bank of Cedar Grove. They funded the Cedar Grove High School Senior Breakfast on June 7, and our annual Student of the Month luncheon on June 8, and we thank them. B27 is a motion to accept the tuition deposit of $500 for the following students for the integrated preschool program for September 2016. And B28 is a motion to approve ML Inc.'s change order number four in the amount of $22,765.05 for the items listed below, and this is part of the 2014 referendum. A motion? Right?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion, I give up, I just do.
No.
Great. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. All righty, I have a motion for items B29 through B36, let's make it easy.
So moved.
Second.
Item B29 is a motion to approve the disposal of textbooks as listed below, they're outdated, and they have been replaced with newly acquired materials. B30 is a motion to approve Beyond Potential Gym located in Fairfield to provide the summer weight training services for the Cedar Grove High School fall athletes, since our weight room will be unavailable for the summer.
Oh, wow.
At the rates listed below. B31 is to approve Belair, sorry, Transport, to provide transportation services for the approximately 40 high school students participating in the summer weight training program that was mentioned in B30. B32 is a motion to approve Lilich Inc.'s payment request number one in the amount of $30,000 for the work completed at the high school. Again, funding for this payment is, funding for this payment request is from the 2014 bond referendum proceeds. B33 is a motion to approve Lilich Inc.'s payment application in the amount of $30,900 for removal of non-friable asbestos floor tile at the high school. B34 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp.'s payment application number one in the amount of $37,024.40 for work completed at North End Elementary and South End Elementary Schools. B35 is a motion to approve ML Inc.'s proposal for additional work at Cedar Grove High School, and the additional work is listed below. And B36 is a motion to approve and authorize the Board Secretary to redeposit funds in the appropriate accounts at Investors Savings Bank as listed below. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Okay, so the next two are really big, so I have a motion to approve B.
Well, do B37 alone, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss 37, yes, you're right, thank you. B37 is not really big, so I'm going to do that one alone. I have a motion to approve B37.
So moved.
Second.
B37 is a motion to approve the purchase of a Focus2Boost 28 Auto Scrubber at the rate listed below. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Now we're up to B38, B39, which are really long. So can I have a motion for B38 and B39?
So moved.
Second.
So B38 is a resolution prescribing the details and bond form thereof for $14,884,000 school bonds dated August 15, 2016 of the Board of Education of the Township of Cedar Grove in the County of Essex, New Jersey, as set forth below. And basically what this is, a brief summary of that, is it's basically the bond sale that's going to take place on July 27 and close in August. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. And actually, we just only approved B30, not B39.
Yeah, I was just going to say that to you.
I caught it as we were, that's okay, no, we're okay, I thought about it as we were. B39. And the second one, B39, relates to the school bonds, resolution prescribing the details and bond form thereof for $14,884,000 school bonds dated August 15, 2016 of the Board of Education of the Township of Cedar Grove in the County of Essex, New Jersey, as set forth therein, and this is to approve the advertising that will appear in the Verona Cedar Grove Times for the bond sale. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Let me flip over 20 pages to find the next one, so you don't miss one, all right. And I have a motion for B40 to B42.
So moved.
Second.
B40 is a motion to approve SSP Video LLC's proposal to film 12, three scrimmages in non-regular season games, Cedar Grove High School football games, at the cost not to exceed $1,620. B41 is a motion to appoint Mr. Michael Featherman, Superintendent of Schools, as Acting Board Secretary from August 6, 2016 through August 31, 2016, and is now where I can, or is it the discussion part where I mentioned something about that?
No, it's coming up later.
Yeah, it's coming up a little later, so.
Okay, so don't talk about it here. Okay. And B42 is a motion to approve ML. And B forty-two is a motion to approve M.L. Inc.'s payment application number four in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-six, or thirty cents, for work done at the Cedar Grove High School. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. And from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, I'm hoping you have something you need to talk about, Mr. Featherman, so I can stop talking briefly.
Yes, thank you. Nice job.
Fantastic.
Just a brief superintendent's report. I think what we have here speaks for itself. Copy's available on the side. It will be posted on the Internet tomorrow for you to peruse. But more importantly, I just wanted to thank everybody, the entire learning community, for, for the job that we do. And it doesn't start in September and end in June. It goes all year long. It does take a village to raise a child. I think we all know that. And working in a school district such as this, you, you are reminded of that often. So, thank you to all. I hope you enjoyed the superintendent's reports. They are chock full of, of what all of your kids are doing all year long. So I thank the teachers and the support staff, my administrative team, for bringing that to you and making this year such a wonderful success. So, thank you for that. We'll be giving you updates all summer with the referendum, and so, stay tuned. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion then for S one to S eleven, please?
So moved.
Second.
S one is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S two is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. S three is a motion to approve the submission of the superintendent's merit goals, notice of completion of two qualitative goals for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. S four is a motion to approve Lauren Malinsky, high school math leave replacement teacher, position BA Step One at the rate listed below, effective September ninth. S five is a motion to approve Caitlin Riley, high school English teacher, BA Step Two at the rate listed below, effective September ninth. S six is a motion to approve Alicia Angione, high school social studies teacher, which is a voluntary transfer from Memorial Middle School at the rate set therein, effective September ninth. S seven is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedure as listed below. S eight is a motion to approve Robert Gogerty as the interim co-head football coach at Step Three at the rate listed below for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. S nine is a motion to approve the letter of resignation from Renee Tevenear, Business Administrator Board Secretary, effective August fifth, two thousand sixteen. S ten is a motion to re-employ and set the salaries for the non-bargaining staff members as listed below for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. And S eleven is a motion to approve the following paraprofessionals listed below for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. Any discussion?
Um, I'd just like to say, Ms. Tevenear, we'll, we'll miss you and best of luck in your new endeavors.
Thank you.
You're a strong force that does so much behind the scenes that I think so few people are really aware of what your contribution has been, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to also add to that, that the last five years, you've kept the district solid. You've, you've really looked out for being fiscally responsible on our behalf. You've brought us a lot of ideas and you've moved this district forward, and I thank you for the last five years and your dedication to our district.
Thank you.
You're gonna be missed.
Thank you.
And we're in trouble. We have an interim for a month? Oh, no. I can just imagine what that, those bills are gonna look like.
I'll have Renee on speed dial.
Thanks. No, thank you both.
We're definitely gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you in all of our, our finance meetings and, and just, as they both said, everything that you've done for us the last five years, you will be sorely missed. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. I feel like the light's almost there. All right, can I have a motion for S twelve through S twenty?
So moved.
Second.
S twelve is a motion to approve the following stipend positions for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year as listed below. S thirteen is a motion to approve the following fall coaches for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year as listed below. S fourteen is a motion to retroactively approve Derek Gaduta, weight room supervisor, for the pre-training football sessions at the curriculum rate as listed below. S fifteen is a motion to approve the following teachers for the South End Lunch Duty substitutes. They're listed below. S sixteen is a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the parents of the student number listed below, as recommended by the superintendent of schools. S seventeen is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S eighteen is a motion to approve the following school volunteers. S nineteen is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. And S twenty is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Alrighty. Can I have a motion for items S twenty-one and S twenty-two?
Keep going. Oh, no.
No, 'cause it's the next section, right? I would've, trust me.
So moved.
Second.
S twenty-one is a motion to approve the following revised and realigned curricula for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year as listed below. And S twenty-two is a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen summer reading list for grades five through twelve. And I'm sure there's a lot of happy kids out there. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. I have a motion for S twenty-four. S twenty-three, can I have a motion for S twenty-three?
There is no S twenty-three.
No, it was, we went twenty-one, twenty-two. We missed the number.
Right, so under contracts, it says S twenty-four. I'm sorry, but I've just been advised it should be S twenty-three.
We missed the number. Or we skipped the number.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Fantastic. S twenty-three is a motion to approve the following contracts for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services as listed below. Any discussion?
No.
Um, I, I noticed that the same agreement that I had asked to pull, he has another one here, so can we strike that? The Greg Parker, ABA? Just so that we're clear on that, so it's not approving happening.
S twenty-three less that.
You're on it tonight.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Okay, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Yes, sir. You could just go up to the podium and just state your name and address, please, so everybody at home can also hear.
My name is Vince Materazzo, thirty-two Linwood Road, Cedar Grove. First of all, I wanna actually start off by saying thank you to Mr. Featherman. It's sometimes very honorable and it's rare for somebody who sees something that's wrong, for them to step up and correct that wrong in an expeditious way. And we had an incident, a very serious incident involving my son, and when we brought it to the attention of Mr. Kinney and Mr. Featherman, thankfully so and rightfully so, they stepped up and they took the appropriate steps to correct the problem. And I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Featherman and Mr. Kinney, who's not here. They did the right thing and they helped me and my son in a time of dire need. So, thank you, Mr. Featherman. That being said, I kinda would like to discuss the actual incident at hand. I, I thought that it was sort of just involving my son Nicholas. And after speaking to Nicholas afterwards and trying to get to the root of the problem, I uncovered an actual motive for the incident itself. And after talking to some other kids and some other parents, this actually is turning out to be something that's more serious and more widespread. And a lot of people don't wanna talk about it because of privacy reasons for their children, and also, there's a fear, an intimidation and a retaliation factor. But I gotta say what I gotta say, and I'm not really afraid. What happened was, and I didn't know this part of it at first, I found this out after the fact, after graduation. My son Nicholas is classified, he has an IEP. He's also been medically excused from physical activity in gym since sixth grade. It's not necessary to get into all the details of that right now, but the bottom line is, he never failed a class in his entire school career. Certainly never failed gym, physical ed. In May, and this is the part that I didn't know, he was asked by his English teacher, who he loves, by the way, to write a thing called Senior Reflection. And he was asked to write it with positive and negative feedback about his four years at Cedar Grove High School. And again, not getting into too much detail about Nicholas's condition or, or anything like that, but his personality shortcomings and his social shortcomings, if you ask him to say something positive, he's gonna give it to you a hundred percent positive. And if you ask him to write his, or talk about his negative feelings, he's gonna give it to you a hundred percent. And there's no, there's no candy coating. He doesn't have the ability to candy coat it or, you know, sugar coat it or whatever. He's gonna give it to you, it's either gonna be black or white. There's no gray area there. And people should recognize that as part of his handicap, as part of what he's, one of the things he struggled with his whole life. Anyway, long story short, in that three-page essay that he was asked to write for Senior Reflection, he did praise some things about the school and about his classmates and about his teachers, and he did say some negative things about a couple of people. One of them was Mr. Gallagher. Right after that essay was written, which he had three, three, there's three marking periods of gym, one is health, health he passed. His first marking period of gym was in ninety-four, his second marking period of gym was in ninety, and his three interim grades for the fourth marking period, IR one, IR two, and IR three, was a hundred, a hundred, and a hundred. And the grade for the fourth interim up to date was, was a fifty, and usually, at the end of the year, at the end of the marking period, that gets bumped up to a hundred as well. Again, he's medically excused. Usually what he does is, in sixth grade, he's been writing a couple of essays at the end of the marking period, and then that completes the course for physical education. Never had a problem with any of them. Been doing it since sixth grade. We told the school that we were going down to Florida on the Thursday before the weekend of graduation, so that was probably the tenth or the eleventh. Graduation was on the seventeenth. So, we were signing him out of school on Wednesday at one o'clock to catch a plane, going down Thursday. We were gonna be back Friday morning. All his teachers, everyone knew what we were doing because he had to take a final exam with Mrs. Hall on Friday. So we were gonna take an eight o'clock flight home. We didn't get home till one o'clock in the morning on Friday morning. He was in school on time Friday morning. While we're in Florida, I got a call from Mr. Mangielli saying Nicholas didn't turn in his three or four essays, and that he's gonna fail gym for this marking period, and he's gonna fail for the year, and he will not graduate. So, I asked Mr. Mangielli that, you know, what could we do about it? And after a conversation with him on the phone, he agreed that Nicholas could work overnight and turn the essay in first thing Friday morning, which he did. He started on it on his iPad in the airport, and he worked on it on the plane, and when he got home, he worked on it some more, finished the four essays, three pages each, by like three o'clock in the morning. Was in school, ten to eight, handed them in. Mrs. Watson handed it back to him and said, "They're not good enough. They weren't cited properly, they weren't quoted properly," blah, blah, blah. Gives it back to him. He rewrites all four essays. Hands them back in. She says, "He cited and quoted too much stuff. It's not good enough." Handed it back to him, told him that he's gonna fail. I get on the phone with Ms. Watson, I get on the phone with Mr. Gallagher, I get on the phone with Mr. Mangielli, and they said, "Okay, he can turn it in via email by noon on Saturday, but they gotta be perfect. They gotta be right." Gallagher told him he had to do four, five-page essays now. Nicholas got very upset, and he just felt that he couldn't do it at that point, but I said he had to, he had to do it. I got in touch with Mrs. Watson, I had Nicholas go see Mrs. Watson, and then they agreed that it was incorrect, he only had to do four three-page essays. I called him at home Friday afternoon at around one or two o'clock to make sure he was doing it and he was okay, and he said he was working on it, but he was very upset because Mrs. Watson told him that he could only get a maximum of fifty points on this essay, because it was so late now. And even if it was perfect, and he got a perfect score of fifty, and I got this in an email, okay, even if he got a perfect score of fifty, he still fails, and he fails for the year. He does not graduate. Okay. I go down to the school and I tried to ask them how to explain how somebody that got a ninety-four, an eighty, and three interim grades of a hundred, which I took pictures of off of homework now, how does the grade go to zero? Because a ninety-four, an eighty, and a zero is a, is a, is an average of fifty-eight, and they said that's what his grade was gonna be. And she said, "That's just the way it is." So, I told them, "He's medically excused from gym. How can you fail a class that you're excused from over an essay that he turned it in three times?" Actually, as a matter of fact, it's funny, this is his work. This is what he printed out over and over and over again and handed in, over and over and over again. This stack, and this stack, and probably about another stack thicker than this that I didn't print out because I ran out of ink. So I told him, "This wasn't right. Something's wrong here. He's not even supposed to be, his IEP clearly is outlined, I don't wanna bore you with all the details, but he's supposed to get extra time, he's supposed to get extra help, he's not supposed to get four assignments all at once. He should've been given these assignments over a period of weeks, and he should've been, they should've outlined due dates and specific dates, and they're supposed to help him with the whole thing. You know what an IEP is, I don't have to bore any of you with the details of an IEP. But in any event, he never got any of that. And I couldn't figure out why they were doing this. That's what was really bothering me, because Nicholas never failed a class. And I read all the essays, they're all right here, you're more than welcome to read them, from the very first ones he did, these are his handwritten, where he started his, you know, rough drafts. I read them all, and they were no better or no worse than the ones he's been turning in since he was six years old. They're fine. But they were, but every time he turned it in, they were no good. Just no good, he fails. Didn't know what the motive was, didn't understand, didn't know about the senior reflection that he wrote. Didn't know about that yet. So anyway, I go to the school, and I'm literally begging Mrs. Watson and Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Mangielli, begging them to do something that we can get this kid to pass so he doesn't fail for the year. I even told them, I said, "We just got back from Florida. I got him signed up in a college down there, okay? I got him an apartment with a roommate, the, the whole thing, it's all set up. If he fails gym and he doesn't graduate, his conditional acceptance is out the window. He does not go to this college. He's done, he's out. Start over next year, reapply." You know what they said? Really not their concern. They didn't care. They said, "This isn't on them, this is on Nicholas, and this was on me," they said, which I still don't understand that comment, that it was on me, okay? Okay, but they said they didn't care, he's not gonna graduate. So I said, "Look," I said, "What do I need to do? Do I need to get a lawyer? Do I need to get an advocate? Do I need to call the state? What do I need to do here? This isn't right." "Oh, okay, well, wait a minute, maybe we need to talk to the special ed director, Mr. Kinney. Let's talk to him, we'll call you back." I said, "Okay, call me back," I leave, I go home. I wait an hour, I get a call back. They tell me that Mr. Kinney said to hand in the assignments, and they could be judged at full rate. So if it was worth 100, he gets 100. If it was worth zero, he gets zero. But they have to be judged, he has to have the ability to get it judged at full potential. And that Michael had to take a final exam, and he had to pass it. And at the time, on the phone, it didn't register with me. I was just like so happy that they were giving him, yes, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt you, when you're saying "they," I don't know who specifically is making those comments, so could you?
Mr. Mangili, Mr. Gallagher, and Ms. Watson.
They're all three saying the same thing, or is one person a spokesperson?
They were all, well, when I was in the room, they all said it together. Everything was said as a group. When I left, it was mostly, Mr. Gallagher was sort of like the lead. Mangili was sort of like just there. And Ms. Watson was adamant about failing him, Watson and Gallagher. Mangili was sort of like just kind of there, you know, at that point. Mangili was the one who called me back on the phone and said, "Mr. Kinney said..." And it was on speaker, so the other two were, you know, there. They said that Mr. Kinney said that he had to take, you know, turn in the paper, it would be graded at full potential, and they had to take a final exam and pass it. And I said, "Okay, fine." I just was so happy that he had another chance, I didn't argue the point. I said, "Well, what is the final exam on? What does he need to study? He's never taken a final exam in phys ed, never." They said, "Just download it from the web," from their study thing. So I got Nicholas to redo the papers again. He had to redo them again, okay? And turn them in via email by Saturday at noon, and send them in to Mangili, Gallagher, and Watson, okay? I downloaded the study guide and printed it out. There's nobody in this room that could pass this test. If they were gonna give it to him, they wanted to fail him. They told him they were gonna give him the test at Wednesday afternoon, and he had to pass this test. You can all have copies of it, I printed out 10 copies. It's a 10-page study guide on the facts, the rules, the regulation, and the history of badminton, wiffle ball, the rules and regulations of the NHL, extreme frisbee, volleyball, and there's one other one on this list, pickleball.
Those are the things that they covered during that last marking period, right?
No, Nicholas has never covered any of this stuff in his life. He's never played a sport.
He doesn't sit in, I'm just...
No, he doesn't sit in, he does not sit in in the class. He goes to study hall and does paperwork. He's never been in a class, he's never taken a final exam, never been part of the curriculum. My other son's a varsity athlete, he looked at this and said, "I can't pass this test. I can't pass this test. If you start throwing these dates and figures, I don't know how hard they were gonna make it." But their intention was to fail him, okay? So here it is if you want to see it. So anyway, when I saw this, I came down to the school administration offices Monday morning, first thing, with my wife and a professional advocate. And we went and we approached Mr. Kinney. And we asked Mr. Kinney, "Why does he think that Michael has to take this, Nicholas has to take this final exam in curriculum that he's never participated in in his life, and to be able to memorize this and study it in basically a couple of days after he's been stressed out enough, basically sick to his stomach over trying to write these essays?" Mr. Kinney said, "I never told anyone to make Nicholas take a final exam." Mr. Kinney said, "He told them to write the three essays, or four essays, whatever they were, three or four pages, three page, uh, four three-page essays, sorry. Turn them in and be done with it. He's got an IEP, he never got the help he needed. He's never failed a class, kid graduates." That was what Mr. Kinney said. At that point, we walked down, saw Mr. Featherman, we explained it to him, and in five minutes, we straightened it out. Great, my son graduated, thank God. Kid's a nervous wreck, he was, he ruined his graduation, it ruined our graduation. We were just totally devastated for the whole week. It was just, you have no idea what it did, just, you have no idea. All right, I can't even begin to explain how upset everybody was, and still is. We didn't have, we didn't enjoy graduation. Trust me, we didn't, we were miserable, everybody was miserable. The point is this, after that, I sat Nicholas down after graduation. I said, "Nicholas, these people were adamant to get you, believe me. I've been around the block, trust me, I'm sure most of us are. We're not stupid people." I said, "Nicholas, I know people, done a lot of things in my life. These people were out to get you, they were out to hurt you. This wasn't about not turning in an essay on time, this was revenge. What did you do to these people?" I'm taking it out on Nicholas, again, because I'm furious. Nicholas, what happened here? He says, "The only, he says, 'I never did anything to anybody.' He says, 'The only thing I can think of is this.'" And he prints out, and he hands me the Senior Reflection, and I read it. The light bulb went off. This was a clear-cut case of retaliation. They did, Gallagher did not like what Michael, Nicholas wrote in Senior Reflection, and he went after him. And I don't know if he solicited Mrs. Watson, or if Mrs. Watson was part, I don't know. I can't tell you how they colluded, but they colluded, and they dragged Mangili into it, okay? And they tried to hurt this kid, and it's wrong. And somebody needs to be held accountable. Because from what I understand, this is not an isolated incident. And I don't know any of the other parents, I heard stories from a couple of different kids. And I know there's other parents out there that are afraid to say anything because their kids are still in the school, or they have other siblings in the school. I don't know the details, but I know that there are people who feel intimidated, and they don't want to get retaliated against. But just on this incident alone, somebody needs to be held accountable. And if it's Mrs. Watson, or if it's Mr. Gallagher, or both of them, what they did to my kid was wrong. And as a matter of fact, I'm very, very sure that a crime was committed here, okay? They tried to alter his grades. You can't mathematically get to zero from where he was at. They tried to convince me that his grade ended up as a 58. And that's a legal document, and they tried to make it a 58 when you mathematically can't get there, okay? From where he was, and we have all the documentation of what his grades were. That's one thing. Number two, they had an obligation to protect my son. They had an obligation to teach my son, to nurture him, to follow the IEP, which was violated on 100 different levels, okay? So their obligation, their fiduciary responsibility to my son, and as teachers, was violated, okay? They retaliated against him, and they definitely intimidated all of us. And it doesn't end there, it goes a lot deeper as to what they did, and it's wrong. The other thing is insubordination. How does a vice principal be told by the Director of Special Education to do one thing, and then Mrs. Watson and Mr. Gallagher do the exact opposite, strictly for punitive reasons? This final exam was being forced down that kid's throat for one reason and one reason only. They were gonna give him this exam Wednesday afternoon, Thursday morning they were gonna tell him he failed, and Friday was graduation, and that was it. I would not have been able to fight this. Nobody would've been around, school was closed, Thursday was, I don't think anybody was around on Thursday. If they were, great, I wouldn't have known what to do, we would've all been stunned. This was a deliberate setup, they were setting him up to fail. End of story. And, you know, it's wrong. And they definitely need to be held accountable. And like I said, I think a crime was committed. That's all I have to say.
Sorry.
Can I stay?
Sure, I just had a question.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, what did your son write in his Senior Reflection? Not that it should matter at all, I'm just kind of curious.
He wrote, it's not a secret, I mean, we'll give it to you. I don't have it with me right now, but I'll get it for you. He wrote that he enjoyed certain classes, he enjoyed certain teachers, he loved his English teacher. I guess all the positive stuff really isn't relevant, so I won't even bother going on and on with it. The negative stuff that he wrote was that, he said the school was dirty, that there was a lot of cockroaches. He said that he found cockroaches in his locker, and he said it was a filthy establishment. Again, you have to understand, if you know my son, his words, if you tell him he has to do something, and he has to do it well, if you tell him he has to say something positive, he's gonna tell you how much he loves you, and you're the greatest person or teacher that ever walked the earth. In his mind, if you tell him that he has to write something negative, he feels that in order to do a good job, it would have to be as negative as possible. There is no middle ground in his affliction, okay? He's like that with me, okay? He either loves me, or he hates me. There is no, eh, you're okay today. You know what I mean? I'm either the best dad in the world, or I'm the worst dad that ever lived, and he absolutely despises me. That's Nicholas. It's black or white, period. So Nicholas was trying to do a good job on this paper. So he said, you know, he said that he didn't like Mr. Featherman. He said, I apologize, Mr. Featherman. He said that he didn't like Mr. Gallagher. He said Mr. Gallagher treated him unfairly for years. That he was punishing him overzealously, not treating him well, giving him a hard time. I don't know the details of that, but that's what he wrote. He also wrote that he didn't get any help with the classes that he wanted to take. They actually tried to tell Nicholas to leave school. In junior year, I was telling them that he wanted to go to college, and we wanted certain classes and electives. He was interested in business, he was interested in all these things. They didn't give him any of those electives, he never got them. Now, I'm not saying that's Gallagher's fault or anybody's fault in particular, but he never got what he wanted. And when he asked his guidance counselors, they, I guess they felt that somebody else was better suited for that, to fit in that class. But he never got what he wanted, and he never got any help from the guidance counselors. He certainly never got any help from, and that's what he wrote. He wrote that he didn't get help from certain people. He wrote that, that he didn't think that, because they didn't help him the way he wanted to be helped, he didn't think that they were doing a good job, and that they didn't deserve the job. Stuff like that, I'm paraphrasing here, but basically, that's what he wrote. And that's it, he didn't say anything, I read it, I read it twice. He didn't say anything inappropriate. He specifically talked about their jobs, how they did their jobs, how it affected him, and how he felt about it. He didn't say like, you know, any, there were no personal attacks, or no, there wasn't anything inappropriate, it's just about the job that they were doing, and that he didn't feel like he was being treated fairly. And like I said, they didn't want him to finish school. They told him in junior year, that they wanted him to go on a work-study program. And not finish school, and not take, I said, "What are you talking about?" I said, "He needs math, he needs science, he needs English. We're trying to get him into a college. He can do it, it's not that, it's not that he doesn't..." Nicholas is very, very bright. It's just that his disease, if you will, hinders his learning ability. It prevents him from doing certain things the way other kids do them. But intelligence-wise, he's definitely got what it takes. He just needs to be pointed in the right direction, and... But sending him to a work-study program, he couldn't understand why they wouldn't let him finish school. He's like, "How am I gonna get into college like this?" And they kept telling him, you know, "You need to go do, you need, you know, basically, go work at McDonald's." And he didn't like that, and I think he wrote about that too.
Hold on just one second. Thank you. Obviously, we really can't comment on anything that you said, but we can take it under advisement. But I, and I'm completely sorry for everything that you and your family went through, but I can tell you that as a parent of children with IEPs, what you went through sounds completely horrible, and I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And we will absolutely look into this, and I can promise you that, absolutely. Yes. Go ahead, yeah.
My name is Duan Shua, and I live at 97 South Mountain Avenue. Your story breaks my heart. Unfortunately, you are not alone. I am here on behalf of my daughter, who has had numerous problems with the school system. Unfortunately, we have not been given an IEP and have requested numerous times. She has been given a 504 that is not followed. Her 504 this year was a document with my name on it. Mr. Gallagher's name, Ms. Rubino, and Mrs. Manley. I'm sorry, I had surgery, I was not at any 504 meeting. I don't know a Ms. Rubino or a Mrs. Manley. It says, "The date of this was October 2015." I wondered why I got a letter about her 504 not being eligible for her to get extended time on the SATs, PSATs. And when I read this, the night before our IEP meeting, or what I thought was to be an official IEP meeting, I realized this document is from... When she had brain surgery in third grade, a craniotomy, and again in fourth grade. We had neuropsychological testing done. This is a 504 from that time. She has had numerous 504 meetings since this period. Mr. Gallagher, I am still waiting for an answer as to where this document came from and why it was presented. Second of all, the information is incorrect at this point in my daughter's life. I unfortunately have a junior. She has another two years to go in this school system with this administration. Talk about fear of retaliation, it's so great. I had the fortunate experience of being at a social function with some members from Cedar Grove, where this conversation came up. I was shocked and appalled at the things that I was hearing, which is what brings me here tonight. I apologize, but this is my daughter. She's a young, she's 15, she's a young, you know, student in her grade. She suffers from OCD, anxiety, panic attacks. She has PTSD from an auto accident. She has been diagnosed with diabetes and a hormonal disorder. I have pages, five pages of a written paper I wrote. I am not going to bore you with those details. I am going to take out the parts I bulleted, and then I am going to read you a letter that she wrote before I ever intended on coming to this meeting about her fear of going back to school. I'm sorry, I apologize, I never intended for this to happen after hearing the things that you went through. I just, it breaks my heart that, first of all, you endured that. Second of all, I'm not alone, thank you so much. To start with, these are the parts that I have bulleted. I was yelled at last year by Mr. Gallagher for 10 straight minutes when I requested extra credit work for my daughter because she was gonna fail, because she couldn't comprehend, and her 504 has never been adhered to. I was told, "How dare I ask? Because other kids do their work." I just showed you the document he presented with my name on it. I just showed you the document he presented with my name on it, for a meeting I was not present for. He talked about our family on the day of our supposed IEP meeting, when a social worker left the meeting and told him everything that was said, as my dau-, my daughter sat 10 feet from his office. Yes, I thought that IEP meeting, first of all, number one, would be confidential. Number two, apparently not, but this woman walked out of that meeting, walked straight into his office, and said, "Watch out, the Shaws have a lawyer, heads up." So I have a lawyer. Is there anything to hide here? I wasn't given 48, or 72 hours' notice about the meeting. I wasn't even given practically 24. I had my lawyer come. He came late. The tide changed when I, once the lawyer walked in, and that woman walked out. Zip, right downstairs. He trashed my family. My daughter wrote it all down, sitting right outside his office. She knows better than to tape it. She knows that would not be significant. I have her paperwork, I didn't bring it. Okay, that's when things got really bad. Mr. Mangilli went to the high school and became a different person. When my husband wanted to make a formal complaint against Mrs. Kay, who has been our nightmare for two solid years, not just my daughter's, mine, my husband's, and my older daughter, who just graduated High Honors from college, as I called her in desperation for help on essays, because I had no idea what this woman wanted. I contacted her. She would write out the same directions she gave my daughter in an email, as if I was dumb. I'm an educated woman. My daughter's in college. None of us can figure out what she wanted. Okay. So, my husband, what happened was, my daughter went into this year with these problems, and had was determined to be on the honor roll. Her sister aced it right through, High Honors now in college. Changed her attitude. Of course, her OCD and anxiety made that a lot easier for her to be determined to work, and work, and work. Till two, like, to all hours of the night, and us being her support system. Okay, um, she kept her off the honor roll. She finally got on the honor roll once in her entire life, one marking period. The second marking period, well, would've been the third of this past year, Mrs. Kay kept her off the honor roll for five tenths of a point. My husband called to complain and make a formal complaint about her, and we were told by Mr. Mangilli that, um, it wasn't, um, that, that wasn't his problem. Mrs. Kay has every right to grade as she sees fit, and then she emailed me that Krista earned this grade. Mr. Bellantoni used my daughter and her overweight status, which we have now found out is a hormonal imbalance, as an example, the first day of his class this year. He asked the class if there was a brunette with gorgeous hair and beautiful eyes that came into the room and weighed 400 pounds, what would turn them off? As my daughter sat there, in tears. That started out the year with biology. It got worse as the year went on. At the end of the year, and this is where I'm going to skip, I'm going to say, Mr. Bellantoni told her if she missed another one of his tests on the day of, she would get a harder test. This is while she had a concussion. When I questioned him about it, his email answer was, "He would do what he wants at his discretion." Mr. Gergis did nothing except to tell us to let our daughter tank in order to get an IEP. And he stated that in front of our lawyer.
Wait, that she should what?
Tank. We should let her just fail. Okay, she has already done that. Many years. The kid has no self-esteem. This is my child, I love her deeply. She has had brain surgery. She's had trauma to her head, and she was in a car accident that created even more trauma. So this has been an ongoing problem. I'm not saying the school needs to fix it. These are issues that we're dealing with. We have her under doctor's care. Anyway, I have documentation from her psychiatrist, her primary care physician, and the neuropsychological doctor, requesting an IEP. We were denied a formal meeting, and Mr. Gergis made a determination on his own that her grades were too good. Said social worker, I still don't know her name, pulled up her grades from past years, and you can see she clearly failed, D's, she was barely getting by. And, um, as I said, her grades were only good this year because of her severe anxiety and OCD. It was a great cost to our family. The most disturbing part of this is, and as much as I know this word is hated, the boys' club mentality that goes on in the Cedar Grove School. My daughter was bullied by teachers and administration after that woman went into Mr. Gallagher's office and presented my information. She was talked about, she was laughed at as she walked by groups of men that worked there. My daughter has an anxiety disorder and panic. She was texting me from the bathroom hysterical. She stopped eating lunch. She's diabetic. She could have fallen out at any point in that school, and what would've been done about it, I wanna know. And why is she being singled out and picked on after said meeting, where Mr. Gallagher technically got through under the bus? I personally made peace with Mr. Gallagher, because he conveniently, during all of this, offered to go see my daughter, who has graduated, show, coincidentally. And I really didn't want to harbor bad feelings. I wanted to start off next year really positive. With that being said, my daughter wakes up in the morning with fear of starting next year. And this is the, and I'm going to read this, and then I will conclude, because there is nothing left to say unless anyone has any questions. "It's June 14th, and school's not even out yet, but I'm already dreading next year. Maybe it's the fact that the school showed me this year how much they actually care about my mental health. Oh, that's right, they don't. Every time I think about the only two teachers who cared, I start crying, because I know I'll be treated the same way next year, but they won't be my teachers, and I'll have nobody to turn to. I'll be well alone all over again. Every single time I think about going back next year, I cry hysterically, because walking those halls make me cringe. Why doesn't the school realize that mental health is just as important as physical? My mental health is way more important than my grades. Why don't they realize that I, sure, I have good grades, but what I had to go through to get them was traumatizing? My mental health is already jeopardized, and has been since the day I walked in there, but now, now, I'm emotionally traumatized from how they treated me. Anxiety is not a joke. It is not the occasional butterflies gracefully fluttering as you are about to present. It is not just nervousness. There are many forms of anxiety, but I suffer from one of the worst. And it's those teachers that I am most thankful for, because they took my anxiety, OCD, PTSD, and panic attacks seriously. When going to them, there was never a thought in my mind that they would not believe me. They would disregard what I was say, that, that they would disregard what I was saying, and turn it around on me. But when going to someone who I was supposed to trust, that's what happened. No matter what the circumstances are, it would always be my fault. Your anxiety does not define you. I don't look at you and see Krista with anxiety. I see only Krista, she would say. But that was the problem. No, my anxiety does not define, but it is a part of who I am, and nobody of the administrative staff takes it seriously. They are not, they not only look past it, but act as if it isn't really there. I really thank her for telling my mother that I play the system, when I was genuinely terrified to approach a teacher, would be Mrs. Kay, and thank you for yelling at me every time I cried in your office. Thank you for allowing another student to call me names and talk down to me about my race and who I am. Maybe you did not believe me, but I was telling nothing but the truth. Another administrator said awful things about my family as I sat 10 feet away from their door. "Have I ever screamed at you?" he said, as I sat shaking in his office chair. Was I supposed to answer truthfully, or with the answer he wanted to hear? I chose truthfully and said yes. I knew from the start of the year that I would have problems with specific teachers, because he found joy in poking fun at those who are overweight like myself. The first day of school, you insinuated, or he insinuated, heavier people with gorgeous eyes and luscious brunette hair were unattractive due to their size. I can't even begin to imagine what I will endure next year. If it weren't for those two teachers, I guarantee I wouldn't have even been there any longer. They kept me going, they kept me strong, and they motivated me, motivated to push through the pain. Most importantly, they took my anxiety, OCD, and everything else into consideration, all grades aside. They took the time to ask if I was okay, and no, I wasn't. I was struggling, I was crying, I was sick and tired of the way I was treated. Often I said yes to them, "I am fine, why do you ask? Oh, my eyes are red, my face is blotchy, and there are tears streaming down my face, but I assure you, I am fine." The administrator from before walks out of her office and says sternly, "Krista, why are you crying?" I assure her as well that I am fine. Because now that she has raised her voice in an ungodly tone, I am not about to reveal to my only counselor that I am not okay. It takes everything I have in me to hold back an entire panic attack and a pool of tears, but I do. I don't hold back. I hold back until they're all, they've all left, and I leave as well. Most of the time to the bathroom was where I sobbed. I wish so badly to be happy at school. School where I spend eight agonizing hours of the day. Every single day, I wish to be happy, but it never happens. I fully, I finally stopped going to lunch because I couldn't stand the constant noise, being surrounded by people I should be happy with, but only felt more suffocated by. I can't even explain to those who don't experience my anxiety what I am feeling. I just wish, wish next year Cedar Grove High School will realize what they've done to me."
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. I couldn't have been easy at all, and that took a heck of a lot of courage. And while I can't say anything else really, what you said was, a lot of what you said is extremely serious, and the board will take it under advisement. I promise. Anybody else?
Kathleen Gosling, 10 Chestnut Court. I'm a recently retired school psychologist. I spent my whole career in special ed, and I've been privy over the last few weeks to a couple of cases in Cedar Grove, and working as an advocate. And as a taxpayer, I'm really horrified, because you are liable for such lawsuits for what goes on. I think you need to take a really serious look at the special education department, IEPs, like this 504 determination meetings. You have to follow the law. And I, I'd really like to see some changes, that things are being done to address all these issues.
Just to speak to specifically your point, this year we did budget to audit the entire special services department, and so that's actually, just in the beginning stages. So, as a board, when we were working with the finance committee, and we all determined that this was an area that we needed to, to take a serious look at and have a professional do so. So that is actually in motion right now.
And when's the estimated time of completion for that audit? Do we have an idea yet?
I don't have a timeline for that. We've been in contact with the organization to initiate that this summer, and it'll take several months to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to get up and speak?
Hi, my name is Janine Frill, 26 Cedar Street, where I don't have a child with an IEP, and these are very specific issues to your families. Very disturbing nonetheless, and, and very personal to, to, you know, each, each problem is very personal to, to your student. So I can't really, um, just, you know, I can't make a determination on where I stand with that. But my issue I do have is with the uncomfortableness that people have with, whether it be teachers or administration. Some of it is concrete, and some of it is not. Some of it is just a personal feeling. And this is why I find it very important that if there's a concrete issue, it needs to be dealt with. If there's something you know that's right in front of you, and it's a problem, deal with it before it turns into something terrible. I personally was involved with a problem with administrator in the high school, and I have spoke to the board about it, and, you know, other than it being, well, we took care of it, and we can't tell you what happened, I don't know if that problem will ever go away. We, we really need to look a little bit closer on how these things are happening. Me personally, my son has had nothing but wonderful things to say about Mrs. Kay, Ms. Watson, Mr. Mangilli, love him dearly. So it's unfortunate that I hear that other people had, had that problem, but again, that's a personal thing. but again, that's a personal thing. My issue is, when there's, you know, the, the problem I experienced with the, with the vice principal at the high school, it was very concrete, and it was very real. So, we know that, that there's problems there, and we know we need to fix them, so just let's fix them.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to get up and speak? Before I- Absolutely.
My issue with Mrs. Watson and Mr. Gallagher is not a personal issue.
No, no, no. Wait, wait. Can you go-
It's your personal pain. It's personal feeling. I don't have a problem with that. I understand that.
Go ahead. If you're gonna talk, just go, just so people at home and everybody can hear, and, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just didn't want to leave anybody in the room with a misguided notion that I have a personal issue or that my son has a personal issue with anyone. Like I said, what I feel, and it is very specific, what happened to my son was a deliberate act of retaliation. Now, are there teachers that, I'm sorry. Are there students that like certain teachers and love them? Yes, my son actually said that there are certain teachers that he loves. Okay, but yeah, if, if a teacher doesn't personally attack your son, if they don't have revenge for him, if they don't have a vendetta, and they don't retaliate against your son, maybe that teacher does look good in some student's eyes. But in my specific case, my son was attacked and abused and retaliated against by Mrs. Watson and Mr. Gallagher. I don't know how deep it goes with Mr. Mangili. I don't know if he was in the middle. Certainly, he needs to explain why the message got crossed between Mr. Kinney and Gallagher, Mangili, and Watson, when Mr. Kinney specifically said, "Let my son turn in his work and be done with it." And they came up with this story that, you know, he had to take a final exam. That needs to be, somebody, they all need to explain that at, at a minimum. At a maximum, I personally, if you want to know some personal feelings, I think Watson and Gallagher should be asked to resign. Okay? They are insubordinate. They talk about, you know, you wrote a paper. Somebody just talked about a paper that they wrote about bullying and retaliation and, you know, intimidation. They bullied, retaliated, and intimidated my son, my family, everyone. And I don't know how deep it goes. I don't know what they did to all these other families. I only heard two other stories here tonight. And these people, I've never seen or met before in my life. Those aren't the people that I were talking about that went in the beginning when I said I heard of other cases. It wasn't them. I don't even know those people. I'm talking about other people, other than them. So, if there's two right here, there's another three that I know of. So, that's five, and me is six, that have personally been attacked by Gallagher and Watson. They should be asked to resign. I want to know from them. I want answers. I want them to stand in front of me and explain to me why my son's constitutional right to his First Amendment was violated. He can write whatever he wants. You asked me the question before, what did he write in the paper? You know what? My wife actually brought up a good point the other night. She said, "What's the difference what he wrote?" He has a, unless he says, unless, you know, which he didn't, unless someone writes something that, that's, you know, inappropriate. He has a right, like any newspaper, like any journalist, like anyone who wants to express themselves, he has a right to say whatever he wants without fear of retaliation or intimidation or them going after manipulating his grades so that he fails. So, no, this isn't a personal attack. This isn't, this isn't personal. This is strictly business, and this is the business of education. And like Ms. Gosling said, I'm a taxpayer. I pay a lot of money, the twenty years or thirty years that I lived in this town, in taxes. I came to this town for the school system. Okay? Where's my dollars worth? The taxpayer money that I paid? My taxpayer money was gonna go to my son not graduating. Gallagher and Watson should be asked to resign. And if they don't resign, they should be fired, and they should also lose their teaching certificates because if they did this here, they'll do it somewhere else.
Thank you. Just to be clear, I was only curious about what your son wrote. It should not matter in the least. No, I know. Absolutely, no, I know. He could have wrote anything. Yep, no, absolutely, I agree.
And I, I'd just like to make it clear, I didn't hear anything that it was personal on anything that I heard tonight. So, you know, I just heard factual information tonight. So, I just wanted you to know that, again, we cannot comment, but I just wanted to say that I did not take it that somebody was personally attacking anyone. You were just giving factual information, so.
And, yep, one more. Okay. I should have hit that gavel, but I didn't. Go ahead, Mr. Cannella. Don't you have to pack for China? Aren't you going soon? I don't, I guess, right? I didn't, I didn't close the portion. Anybody can talk.
My name is Chris Cannella. I am the president of the Cedar Grove Education Association, so I represent the teachers. And I can't speak about every case, but with Ms. Watson, just so Mr. Mazzarazzo, you understand, she never read that essay.
Gallagher read it.
I, I could only, I could only speak about the teacher, and again, that's my job, so I-
Hold on, wait a second. Hold on, wait a minute.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. No, 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 I know.
Because the teachers- Because the teachers-
Hold on, wait. Everybody just- Okay, wait. Mr. Mazzarazzo- All right, I don't want to, because I want everybody to get-
Well, but he shouldn't say that.
No, I know.
He can't testify as to what she read or didn't read.
Okay.
He has no right to say that, and he has no right to say that above it.
I'm not gonna, okay. I don't want to end the meeting.
No, I have my own set of my own rights.
But I'm not gonna-
He can't say that.
Hello, wait, just one second. I will end the meeting, though, if everybody's yelling, okay? If everybody's not yelling- Okay, then I'm happy to continue it, but we can't let it get out of hand, okay? And I absolutely-
He can't say yes to take that back.
Just, let's just stop for a second, okay? Let's just, all right, I understand-
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. I understand your frustration. I absolutely do, okay? Absolutely. We're gonna close that portion of the meeting. I just want to say that there was an awful lot that was said tonight. Just extremely serious things from people lying and forgery and lying about conversations. And we, as a board, take all of that very seriously. And we are absolutely gonna look into this because as much as we all say, "This is Cedar Grove", this is not Cedar Grove. This is not what I think of when I think of Cedar Grove. And if any of you are having, or you've had these experiences, it's horrible, and nobody should be going through what you're all going through. And I'm sincerely sorry that you are, and we will absolutely look into this. I promise. Okay, future meetings, July nineteenth. Location to be determined. We have no idea just because everything's under construction, but it'll be July nineteenth, seven PM executive, eight PM regular meeting. August twenty-third, again, not sure where it's gonna be, but seven PM executive, eight PM regular meeting.
Before we dismiss, I just, I, I don't like, I, I think we just need to set realistic timeframes here. We're going on break now, so I don't want to give unrealistic expectations of how we would get back to people. So, we, I just wanted to be mindful that we are on, we, we don't meet again until July nineteenth. Is it July nineteenth?
Right, yeah.
July nineteenth. So, um, I don't know exactly how the logistics of everything will go, our conversations, but I just wanted to throw that out there, so, to keep that in mind.
Right, and there's a lot to look into, clearly, which will take some time.
Can I just ask a question? My biggest fear is my daughter will retaliate against in September, and that is my only concern. I don't care what kind of date, but not my daughter. And that, I want, I, I want some sort of resolution or some sort of acknowledgement that that is not going to happen. And I know that you can't control people. I understand that, but I am fearful. This took a lot for me to come here today and share the things I did. I don't want to throw people under the bus, but I feel like it necessarily.
And we appreciate you coming forward. And as again, as I said earlier, it could not in any way have been easy. And I know you absolutely fear for your daughter, and I don't blame you. And as you said, there's nothing that we can do as a board to absolutely control everybody. We can do a heck of a lot to make sure that if there's something going on, that it stops and that what's happened to your daughter does not happen to her again or to anybody else. That I can promise you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to end the meeting, please. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Vandelaar?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dodd?
Yes. The meeting is ended.